Good evening, I'm gonna call this meeting to more order. Meeting up Thursday, April 16, 2015. At this time, I'm gonna ask you to stand for a moment of silent prayer. At this time, I'm gonna call on Mr. Parent for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. This time, I ask, uh-oh. At this time, I'm gonna call off Mrs. Hines, what, member for the mission statement, Mrs. Hines?
Thank you. The mission of the Portsmouth Public Schools is to challenge the minds, challenge the bodies, and challenge the dreams of all students while focusing on excellence.
Thank you. Attendances, Madam Clerk?
Reverend Fleming?
Present.
Mrs. Hines?
Present.
Mr. Lamb?
Present.
Mr. Nance?
Here.
Mr. Parent?
Here.
Reverend Patillo?
Present.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Present.
All members are present.
Good, thank you. At this time, I'll call your attention to the agenda with the following changes I'd like to make to it. I'd like to defer item number four, which was the request for the approval of an award for emergency procurement for IC Norcom Boilers. I'm gonna defer that item. And I wanna add item number seven, closed meeting. Behind discussion, behind Board members' reports. Those are the two changes I would like to make to the agenda.
Please, approval is amended.
Second.
The moving proper second that we adopt the agenda as amended in the discussion. Madam Clerk?
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to go to item number two, which is for discussion, the annual special education plan in Part B flow-through for 2015-16 school year. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you. Mr. Bridgeford, I'd like to first of all say good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
And for this item, I will call on Dr. Taylor at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy, and good evening to everybody. As you know, each year, it is customarily that we apply for the annual special education grant. If you will note in your packet, you will see that it's primarily consisting of salaries and benefits, the purchased services, professional development materials and supplies, and equipment to support our students with disabilities as well as the program. Mrs. Ellen Giordano is here tonight. She is the program executor of this grant. If you have questions, and we are here to respond to them, and at the next meeting, we will be asking for approval of this, but we have found that it is very, very beneficial. We don't know what we would do without it. So, it's an excellent grant, and I'd certainly like to commend Mrs. Ellen Giordano for the services that she has certainly provided up to this point. So, do you have any questions or concerns? If so, Ellen, who is she?
Alright. I'm familiar with this grant. But one of the things that I meant to do it earlier, and I apologize, but I would, before I approve it, I would like to see, I would like a listing of the staff members, thirty staff members at a hundred percent, one person at ninety percent, one at sixty-one percent, and fourteen funded at fifty percent. If I can get a list.
Is that the names, is it parent and their titles?
Yes. I would like to see that. Okay? Not that I'm not gonna approve it, but I would like to see it broken down as to who these people are.
Okay, just names?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Could you furnish that to the whole board? Because this makes sure everyone gets the same information.
Yes. So then, the next meeting, I will send that ahead of time to Mr. Parent, the names and the folks who are thirty percent, thirty staff members coming out one hundred percent.
And you can send it to Dr. Bracy, and he'll disseminate it.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I meant to do it earlier, but we've been busy.
Make sure, Mr. Patterson, this is happening. Yeah, it might get flooded in my.
That may be something that we can provide in our packet by ten o'clock tomorrow.
Yes.
To Kathy, but Ellen, I'll talk with you about it tomorrow to see if we can get it in, the packet that we sent to the board members prior to next week's board meeting.
That would be great.
Okay.
I'm not as familiar with it. Could you just explain to me what the private school set aside is?
I'm going to yield to Ellen, the executor of the grant.
That is, we are required to set aside funds in our grant for students whose parents have elected them to place them in private schools within the region. So, we provide speech services to those children. So, there's a formula we have to use, and those funds go directly to the speech services. So, right now, we have about, probably about eleven students who receive, who are eligible for speech, they're in one of our private schools, and we have therapists that go out there, and that's what that money is set aside for. It can only be used for that.
Okay.
And sometimes, they even come to some of our schools if the services aren't available. They adjust for that particular service.
Right.
Mr. Nance?
This money flows through the state and then is administered to us?
Correct. Comes through our finance from the state to our finance.
How much do they glean off the top? What is their percentage now?
I do not know that.
Can you find that out for me, please?
I can, work with Mr. Steele, yes.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure how that works, Mr. Nance, but I'm gonna follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're talking about the percent that the city pulls off?
Is that no Title One? Their commission.
It used to be what?
It used to be six.
It was a hot, I mean, in other words, over the years, it's crept up.
And the Title One money, if you can find that out.
Up to twenty percent, they would take off of the Title One budget as a set aside. It has been up to twenty.
What, twenty percent?
A set aside, which included No Child Left Behind, which we really do not do now, but it was set aside for transportation, parental involvement, and special programs that we have. It was specified what you had to do with it. And that is still current.
I just wanna find out how much the state's putting in their coffers, is what I'm saying.
Well, the set asides is within our grant, but what they include is professional development, parental involvement, in addition to the monies that we will need for children who have been grandfathered in, to the schools that we have existing where parents have left them there after the No Child Left Behind. This is Title One that I'm talking about now.
Mr. Parent?
I think what Mr. Nance is talking about is the amount of money they take for administrative cost. In other words, they take a certain percentage for administrative cost. Yeah, we'll get that. Yeah.
I have one last question. The private school set aside, is that a requirement of the grant?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
You send letters out every year. You have to send letters out every year, right?
Correct. It's part of our child fund, so we have to find students with disabilities who are in private schools as well. But they don't get the same services as they would if they were in one of our public schools. So, it's speech services that they get at this time.
That's birth till, when's it start?
Rated twenty-one?
It does. It could work with our preschool grant as well, because that's two separate grants, exactly. So, yes. At this time, we don't have any preschool children in private schools who would be eligible for this, so it's just the elementary and up.
Gotcha.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you very much. Next item is item number three, request for the approval of the 2016-17 instructional calendar. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, sir. Now, Mr. Durin, if there are any questions, we presented the calendar to you at the last meeting to review. So, now, if there are not any questions, then we would ask that you would approve it at this time.
Please, approval.
Second.
Proper secondary approval, the instruction calendar is given. Any discussion of questions? If not, roll call Madam Clerk?
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay. Okay, item number.
I just want.
Mr. Parent?
Twenty fifteen, December twenty fifteen, the teachers have, the staff have two full weeks, is that correct? I don't have the twenty fifteen calendar.
Fifteen, sixteen.
Right.
Well, I see, yes, I would need to see it.
I know the staff enjoyed having two weeks.
That's the one that has already been approved.
Yeah, he's asking for a fifteen, sixteen.
We're talking about next year's calendar for Christmas. It's the two weeks, it's the two weeks.
Oh. The Monday, they had to come back half a day on Monday or something?
You're talking about fifteen, sixteen?
Glad you raised the question there, Mr. Parent. Thank you.
Is she looking?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, why is she's looking for that? Item number five, I would like to change the way we do this. I was talking to the superintendent about it. It's the next, in other words, the item number five, review the agenda for Thursday, April the twenty-third. Normally, what we've done in the past is, you had the calendars come out in the packet to you, so you got the hard copy in front of you. Then the superintendent used to go over and read it to us, same thing we've already looked at. What I would like to do, unless there's a significant change that we wanna make on the agenda, just send it out, and then if you have any questions, you can call and say, why is the item on here? I don't think that's generating any questions, just that I think it's time-consuming to go through, and that is just for the public to put it in their laps, what we're gonna be doing in the next meeting. So, I wanna get your feelings on that.
Excellent idea.
If no one objects, I would like, you still get the agenda ahead of time, just like we did tonight. You have it. But if you have any specific item you wanna, you have a question on, we ask a question on a specific item, but not read that whole lineup for the next meeting.
Is this on the website, the agenda?
I don't know, I didn't check. This was just something I thought about.
We want to be transparent, and we want the public to know what is.
It's up there?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we had discussed, you know, how the city council put their agenda in the paper the week before or whatever. We talked about that.
I don't think we ever got around to getting it.
I think we said, once we get this new system in place.
Board docs.
Board docs. That will, that will make it available, once we have that board docs.
Well, what about the people that don't have a computer? They look in the carens or. I mean, the question came up, I was, and I raised it before.
We can, we can check and find out what, what the, what we were looking at before calls for a year, because that's really.
Because we, it came up during the discussion of, because we did, we were not open.
Yeah, I remember the discussion on it. Yeah, I remember the discussion on it.
And that's what they, we would say at the paper, I mean, the city's automatically in there. And therefore, there's no discussion of what was not done properly, because it's consistently in there before their meeting, that Sunday before. And we did ask to look into that, too.
Yeah, I remember us talking about it.
Right.
And so, put that, put that down, so we can get a cost on that.
And let me make sure I know what, what, what Ms. Williams is asking, so that I can make sure to have it. Now, I know you were saying that the people that don't have computers, you know, how would they get the?
Board docs.
Right. How would they get the information? Okay.
You know, I was basically talking about what's on the agenda for public information, because I think Kathy already sends it to the.
It's on the website there.
It's on the website?
Yeah, that's what I thought. We discussed putting everything on the web.
That wasn't what I discussed.
Oh, okay.
I discussed putting it in the carens and the website.
Okay, so that's the first I'm hearing about the carens, I knew about the website.
Yeah. We, I, my recommendation, the discussion was trying to do it as the city did theirs. They put it in the carens, and it's on their website. And it came up after the fiasco about the interview process.
Right.
And if we had done that, it would have been automatically published to the community. But I mean, it's.
Okay, we'll check on that, and is this on the same subject? Because I wanna try to go back to what we originally waiting for Jessica for, and let's get ours on the instruction calendar.
Well, let's, we can go back.
Okay.
There are nine days off for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year during winter break. The teachers and students do get out early on December twenty-first, which is a Monday, and then they're off until the following January fourth.
Right, first.
Yes. And that calendar is posted on the website, and it was approved by the board April fourteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Right. Mr. Nance?
Don't mean to belabor this, Mr. Chairman, but, Mr. Superintendent, if there's any way you can look at putting that half-day somewhere else, because if you look at it, you're not gonna have any attendance that Monday hardly. That's gonna be a non-productive day, in my opinion. I know my boys would say, hey, pops, come on, let us stay home today, you know? Thank you. I'm just, that's common sense to me, you know?
Same thing, show us the calendar.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I've got it here. It just doesn't make sense to bring everybody back on Monday, and then we're gonna, we're gonna have a couple hours of instruction, we're gonna feed the children, put them on the bus, send them home. It seems to me that we ought to give the staff the full two weeks, and if we can't, I agree with Mr. Nance, if we can do something with the twenty-first and move that half-day, I think the staff would appreciate that. I mean, it's got, I agree with him. I mean, it's gonna be a lost day. And some kids are, you're gonna have a high absenteeism that day, because parents know the next day, the kids are gonna be out, and they're just, they're just not gonna send the kids to school. Yeah, we can. I mean, something you can look at and see.
Sure. We can, I'm sure that won't be a problem.
Okay, my question is, are you asking for this to be deferred?
We're asking superintendent to look at it and bring it back.
It's not even an agenda issue, right?
This is next year's calendar.
This is the one we've already approved last year.
Last year.
The fifteen, sixteen calendar. It's supposed to be an adjustment.
Yeah, the current one.
The current calendar.
It's already approved, you just wanted.
We've already approved it, we're just asking.
Yeah, I'm looking at six, seven, but you're talking about this year's.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so you're gonna go back and take a look at this year's. Okay, so, okay, so back to where we are, the one that we're discussing for the vote, which is. Already done it, yeah, we already done it. Yeah, okay.
Did he already vote?
Yes.
We've already voted on that, right? Kathy?
I'm sorry?
We've already voted on that, right?
Yes, on the calendar.
Okay.
I love it. I'm sorry.
I know I did. I'm.
I'm sorry, I confused you.
You confused me.
I just wanted to make sure that we can somehow work out for two full weeks.
Now, Mr. Lamb?
Yeah. All I was gonna say was, I think before we do change up what we're already doing with regards to the agenda items and so forth, I think we do need to look at all available possibilities. I mean, we've mentioned the currents, we've mentioned the website, but I also think possibly the community channel as well would be a viable option. You know, you're looking at, through that venue right there, you're looking at newspaper, computer, as well as TV. I'm just thinking that before we change that up, that we look at all possible opportunities to, to get that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I totally agree with transparency, and suggestion to find out the logistics about the currents is, I think it'd probably be a good idea for our clerk to contact the city clerk to see how the city gets their agenda in there without having to pay for it. Apparently, that's a service that they get.
I think they pay for it.
Is it an ad?
Yeah, you might as well call us.
Well, I don't think it's a paid advertisement. I'm just, if you could ask Ms. White simply, do they pay to have the agenda put in there, or you know, who you made contact to do it? I mean, we're all about saving the public some money and showing them how we're saving it, and showing them the agenda. We're not ashamed. Does that make sense?
If we definitely find out how they do it, or who was responsible for doing it.
Okay. Can I add one more thing to that? I think the only concern I may have is how early the agenda has to be to the currents for publication. What is their turnaround? I mean, if we're.
This is what she should be able to find out and bring back to us, and then we would have to make a decision from there.
Got it.
Because we don't know how fast they put theirs together and publish it, so.
Right.
We'll have to find out.
That would be the only concern I would have.
It's usually the Wednesday before publication.
Because I know, just like our packets go out to Friday before the board meeting. Is that fast enough? No. For the currents, I think it has to be in the paper. But I think the deadline is either Tuesday or Wednesday at noon time.
Okay.
If I remember correctly.
Well, the great thing about board docs is everybody will be able to get it at the same time. Bam!
Yep, it will.
Okay. I think all this derived from me saying something about, to make a slight change in the way we make a delivery here at the meeting. So, I mean, everyone's comfortable with that, instead of us, you got it before you, unless we're making that last-minute adjustments like this, and this way, we won't be going through the whole detail, two sheets of paper, what it is for the next meeting for a week or two weeks from now.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have heartburn of the change.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just throwing out there for you all, if you, if you wanna continue, that's fine.
No, I agree. I mean, I don't have heartburn with the change. I'm all about not double, doing double work, but I think before we make any changes at all, I think we need to look at the opportunities that's been discussed with regards to the transparency and making available to the public.
Okay. My question is only one way we're doing it, and that is reading the agenda out. Do you wanna continue to do that? That's, that's my question.
Okay, I think we should continue to do it until we find out how we're going to utilize these other avenues.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Bracy, let's go ahead and knock that out.
You're right, sir.
Agenda for next week.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, the proposed agenda for the regular monthly meeting, Thursday, April twenty-third, two thousand fifteen. The agenda, we have the call to order by Mr. Bridgeford, Chairman, moment of silence, pledge of allegiance, pledge of allegiance students from Churchland Academy will do that along with the statement, the mission statement of the school board, Ms. Hines. Attendance will be taken by Ms. Chambers, our clerk. Item one will be the request for approval of the agenda. Item two, recognition of Christopher D. Walker, second-place winner of the Group 4A State Competition for Indoor Track, Churchland High School. Item three, presentation, recognition of student with the highest attendance rate for March. Item four, request for the approval of the resolution recognizing Teacher Appreciation Week, which is March fourth through the eighth. Item five, request for the approval of the minutes, the regular monthly meeting held on Thursday, March twelfth. The special meeting, public hearing held on March nineteenth. The regular monthly meeting held on Thursday, March twenty-sixth. Item six, public comment on non-agenda items. Item seven, monthly report, curriculum instruction, Dr. Helen Taylor, Senior Director.
Dr. Bracy, Dr. Fiona Nichols will give the CNI report at the next board meeting, as I will be absent that evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody get that changed. All right. Item eight, request for the approval of the annual special education plan and Part B flow-through for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. Item nine, discussion, monthly report, human resources, this Jessica Durin, Acting Senior Supervisor. Item ten, request for the approval of the employee transaction report for April two thousand fifteen. Item eleven, monthly report, budget and planning, Mr. Christopher Steele, Assistant Superintendent. Item twelve, request for the approval of the finance report for March two thousand fifteen. Item thirteen, discussion, business report, yours truly. Item fourteen, discussion, board members, comments and concerns.
Bless you.
Item fifteen, adjournment.
I'll be adding that case from Hooper.
We got a case, that's right, add that case.
And that's what says his name, I'm sorry.
And this also from the night of the firmament. Mr. Steele, do you think that'll be ready for the next meeting?
We're hopeful.
Okay, so you got two items to be added.
What would you like them? What would you like them to make from?
The business or the assistance for budget, that's the one for the boiler. And on the case, you can put it at the end. Okay?
Okay.
All right, Mr. Parent?
You know, for four years now, five years, I've been on the board, we've been reading the agenda. Now, there's an assumption that people are watching Channel forty-seven. Now, if they're not watching Channel forty-seven, they're not, they're not getting the agenda. I mean, they're not listening to the agenda. So, in many ways, newspaper, I think it's an excellent way, and having it on the website, which we've started doing that, people, most people have computers, or if they really wanna know what's on the agenda, they're gonna find a way to get to the information. But I see the point of why Dr. Bracy, I mean, he just read the agenda, but if you're not watching Channel forty-seven, you didn't get the agenda. But you will get the agenda if you go, if it's on the website or if it's published in the paper. And I realize there are three ways that we can get this information, and it's, as many ways as we can be transparent to the public, I'm all for that.
Were you disagreeing?
No, I'm just saying, he just read the agenda, and it just hit me, the only, the reason we read the agenda is so that people will know what's on the agenda, but if I'm not watching Channel forty-seven, it just dawned on me that, I don't know what, I don't know what the agenda is, but we have a failsafe, something that we can back up.
You like it reading, is what you're saying. Well, we were saying it was good that you read it, because then you all realized something wasn't on there.
Right.
So, I think it's good to read it wherever we can.
It does take time, but, but you gotta back up.
And we've come up with things, too, where we've asked to add.
That's correct. Yeah.
Because we don't always read.
That is, no, I'm not gonna say that. No, I'm not going to say that.
Mr. Laam?
Yeah. I won't.
I think what you're trying to say, Mr. Parent, is, I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, we're not reading the agenda right now for those that's not watching 47. We're reading it for those that are watching 47.
Right.
But some will partly read the newspaper.
Right.
So, I mean, we're just talking about trying to make this as broad out, do different venues as possible.
Absolutely. Okay. Board members' reports? Do we have any reports with Reverend Fleming?
Mr. Steele, I do want us to continue to address crossing guards, raincoats. I thought that was settled, but it's not. And a lady shared with me who's a crossing guard that it's been three years since she's had the last one that was offered to her, wasn't her size. So, is there a way that, because I'm quite sure we have discussed that maybe, what, a trillion times? Is there a way that you can actually look at the list of crossing guards and give all of them a call?
Well, we'll get with all the crossing guards and make sure that, you know, they'll know that all those items, as far as, are all available right now in the warehouse for anybody who wants them.
What I'm saying is, can you make contact with every crossing guard? It's one thing to have a meeting, but it's another thing to make contact.
We can make contact.
Make contact with everyone that's being paid to be a crossing guard, and just go down the list and make sure that everybody has that.
Bring it to them.
Just to piggyback on that, going through the budget book that we were given last time we were here, I do see a significant increase in, for crossing guards, for their materials and supplies. Is that in hopes to get new materials for everybody, or is that to replace materials? But I'm looking at this budget line, we had $3,700 this year, and we're budgeting $7,000 next year. So is that in hopes to get, you know, new for everybody and to really replace this issue so that we don't have this come up again? That would be my assumption, but I'm just going to ask.
When the issue came up before, we made the list of everything that was available for the crossing guards. And then, for those items that we didn't have in the warehouse, we ordered those to have a full complement in the warehouse, so as crossing guards needed something, it could be either replaced, or it's a new issue for a particular crossing guard. So, we wanted to make sure in the warehouse, we have an adequate level, so that we can out, for instance, of any particular item at any one time.
Okay.
So it can be responsive to the crossing guard needs, you know, at that time.
Okay, let's go around the table.
That's good.
Mr. Laam?
Just a couple things. Two questions. First off, Dr. Taylor, I know that, oh gosh, we've had so many meetings and so forth, and a spring break in there. You had discussed that we were going to put in place a 45-day period plan with regards to, based upon the results that we got off the benchmark testing. Where are we with that 45-day plan? How's it coming along?
The plan I have collected, planning from every school, and how are they coming along as we continue to go into the buildings? We continue to monitor to see that what's been put in the plan is actually being executed. Tutors are in place. In addition to tutors being in place, students have been identified that fall within a certain band of scoring to make sure that those students are receiving additional help to try to help them get over the line so that they will meet the bar, or reach the bar, I should say. So the plans are being executed in each building. They're different to the extent of which subject area may be the greatest in that particular building. But I do have them, I have copies of them, and you're welcome to see them if you'd like to.
Okay. And you mentioned the tutors, that seemed to have been also an issue on that evening as well, with regards to, I think there was like, we had said possibly there was about 100 volunteers or tutors across the district?
Actually, the tutors that I refer to are those tutors who are paid
Okay.
through the certain grants that we have. So they are, I consider, all tutors are helpful, but those are the ones that are being paid through Porson Public Schools, through various grants.
And then, my second question for Mr. Steele and Dr. Bracy, it's with regards to, we haven't heard much, so I'm real curious, this is kind of a follow-up, with regards to how has the implementation of changes that's supposed to have been done and put in forth with regards to transportation? Where are we with that? Is all of our equipment, as far as special needs buses, cleared? Are we still having the issues of the double runs? Are we still having the respect issues that was going on? And has there been some significant changes for the better, for the worse, or are we about the same?
Well, what I can tell you is that we continue to work an action list of things that need to get done. For instance, we just got delivery this week, I think, of the first set of new buses that are coming in. I don't think all of them have come in, so we're, the school buses that were ordered back in December or even before are starting to come in for April, so that's replacing some of our school buses that are worst in the fleet. The issue about communication, communicating to school buses was a problem of coverage with our current radios and things like that. The antenna, I think, actually was last week or this week, and I'm kind of looking at Dr. Shepherd, if you might be able to confirm. So it was this week, so a new antenna has been installed. It's going to be hooked up to our new transceiver, I believe, and the frequencies are going to be adjusted. But with this new antenna that's on the city's emergency tower, will give us a lot better coverage for all those issues about nobody could talk to each other, and that's going to improve that area. The procurement of digital cameras, a lot of, you know, our newer cameras have two cameras, one in the front and the back, but a lot of our older buses only had one camera, so we were procuring additional cameras to provide additional coverage there. A lot of the issues on customer service and things like that, there's been in-service training for every level in transportation to address that and try to improve that area. As far as additional equipment, including improvements in tracking buses and monitoring on time, is, we've been spending time identifying a GPS system that is kind of state-of-the-art that will provide locations of the buses, not only to transportation, but provides a service for parents that they can sign up and know where the bus is, whether bringing their child home or picking it up, so they can see, you know, if it's raining, you know, what time do I need to walk out to the bus stop, things like that. So, again, there's a whole list of action items we continue to work to improve that situation.
And as far as the quote-quote "customer service" training, what are, how do we know, how are you measuring, how are you engaging?
Laam, I got to cut in. This is board member reports, we're asking for staff reports, or you are.
I'm just asking questions. I apologize.
Yeah, but if we're going to give staff reports, I would like to get them, that all of us get them at one time, and you're putting them on the spot, like information they may not have immediately to you. I'm just saying, this is supposed to be reserved for board reports, and you're turning it into a staff reporting.
I'm just asking questions. I didn't realize that that was a staff report.
I understand what you're saying. I just want to try to keep us on task.
That's fine. Then, my last one. This has came from the Brighton PTA associate, or the group. They were able to, this past year, based upon the PTA initiative that took place, they tailored it to meet their needs and so forth, and because of that, they submitted an application to the Virginia PTA Association, and they have been recognized for the 2015 Virginia PTA Winter Great Ideas Membership Award.
Awesome.
They have went from zero members to, and I don't want to be specific, because I'm someone to say greater than 140 members at that time. Not only have they been able to do that, they have been recognized by the Virginia PTA in their magazine, The Voice, which went out on April 1. And this magazine went out through all the Commonwealth to the different PTAs, and they told me, the state PTA had said, that they thought that what occurred here was such a good idea, that they wanted other PTAs to be aware of it, and hopefully to adopt the strategy to get more involvement. And because of that, they will be recognized and honored, I believe, in June at the PTA Annual Conference. If I remember this and read this correctly, they're being not only recognized as a reward, but they'll be given a $15, $50 office supply gift certificate, and by what I understand, by Ms. Donna Clifton, before I came, they're also in the running of possibly some other achievements and awards as well, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Not a board member report, just a comment and a suggestion. Normally, when the crossing guards or whatever, some of them have inboxed me to say they didn't get their gear or whatever, and I assure them that we were told by the former Assistant Superintendent that they had them up there, they could pick them up, and they need to go there and get them. And if they were not there, to call me back, and I would follow up with administration. And every time they'd been, they were able to get them. So if they are able to go to transportation or wherever they house them, I think they do have quite a few stories.
And I still want our agreement. Thank you.
Yeah, you can do the agreement.
Still want our agreement.
But I do believe they need to take some responsibility and go too. But y'all do whatever you want.
Thank you.
But that's what I tell them.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I've been a little remiss recently, not bringing this up, but this Saturday, and everyone's invited, there will be a rally in Richmond on the 18th, and it's a joint venture by VEA and Virginia PTA. It's called Put Kids First. And one snippet of it is, you know, Virginia kids do deserve better. Over 66% of the three- and four-year-olds in the Commonwealth in low-income housing, or low income, are not enrolled in preschool programs. And that's where it all begins. You can go to veanea.org, get more information, and there is one bus I know is leaving, and it's already full from Oakwood High School. And so if anybody wants to follow it, I guess, need to be there by 9:30 to 10:00. And it promises to be a great day in Richmond. And if anybody is interested in going, I don't have a seat on the bus, so I'd like to ride with somebody. Thank you.
He's okay if I pass mine around to the board members. And I'll just read it, and I have a talk with Dr. Bracy also, so he can follow up on some of the things I have. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Basically, what I have are some things that I've, that feel should be brought to everyone's attention, if we could possibly look into them, if approved by the board to do so. The first thing was policy or procedures created, reviewed, revised for the process of long-term suspensions and expulsions, in an effort to show some type of congruency across the board that would include, but not limited to, prior behavior record, severity of the offense, and evidence of a logged behavior intervention plan for students with negative behavior patterns. Basically, so we can make sure that everything can run across the board for every school when they're being booked before the panel to do long-term suspensions. I think the last session we had kind of brought some of these to me, as far as how that's done. So if there's a policy already in place or staff procedure, if we could see that, that'd be great, if they do have one. Also, when we do the employee transaction reports, I want to know if there's a possibility to have, if we can have actually a spot on the board, on the chart where it has, if they have either retired, terminated, resigned, or promoted, so we can see exactly why they're not in their positions anymore. Let's see if we can keep track of the reason why they're leaving Porson Public Schools, or if we do X or Y interviews, things of that sort. So just to say that this person is no longer here, it really doesn't explain the turnover in a certain department, or why they're not there. So if that was possible, if that...
It's on the report.
Yeah, it's on the...
But when I look at the report, it doesn't give a reason why.
It gives a reason.
Oh, so it said they terminated them?
I think it's a letter that represents the line, like retirement.
Okay. Okay, so that's perfect.
I think it's buried in there. If I remember correctly, it's by a letter.
Okay.
I think it's by a letter.
Okay. And also, just to make another request for a listing we asked for a few months ago, based on HR list, administration, like director, supervisor, department heads, so we can actually see job descriptions and tenure and things of that sort for all those positions. We requested it back in January originally, and again in February.
Let me talk with you, because I'm not sure. I know there's a classification list that gives most of this, but are you... I think you're asking for a little bit more than that, but I want to make sure before I say anything.
If you can just look into it.
Yeah, let me look, because I think this is available to us already. Let me make sure.
If so, please let me know.
That wasn't the question. The question we had asked was, we were doing the budget, and we were looking at the positions a certain level or above.
Right.
We were talking about administration, maybe top-heavy positions was the discussion.
Top-heavy, that's correct.
Yeah. And we asked for those positions, the titles, and that was...
Right. If we could possibly get that. Also, I just got this yesterday, and I checked out this morning, the blinking safety light at Douglas Park hasn't been on since spring break, so the drivers have been driving excessively fast during the release and the admission to school every day, so if that could possibly be looked into, to make sure that's actually where in working order. And do we get reports, our brother chairman, about projected surplus for the end of the fiscal year, before the end of the fiscal year?
Yes.
I think so. I think so.
I don't think we get them as a, we might have an idea when we go to the meetings, but I don't think there's a board for the receive. No more than what you see here, you figure it out from the projections on the monthly budgets that we get, what we projected that we spent so far.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, is there a way for...
For what to be put up?
To look and say, hey, we're looking like we're going to have about $3 million left by the end of fiscal year.
Oh, yeah, there's always a projection available.
Okay.
Yeah, and just like, you know, for yourself, it's subject to change. There's a projection after each month expenditure.
So are we able to get that, just to, or at least myself, if no one else is interested?
Well, if we get it, we would have to do it for everybody, we wouldn't do it just one person. Because normally, when we do our finance work, when we've been doing it monthly, we look at it to see what the projections are being, and, you know, you could change drastically from month to month, all depends on what comes up, just like this boiler thing.
Okay.
If that's something the board would like to have.
We normally don't get...
I guess, I was just wondering exactly what you're looking for, because some of that information is provided. Like, monthly report, there is a trend line and a projection of
What you're receiving.
how we're tracking both the revenues and expenditures.
But what would it clearly state?
I'm not sure if, maybe you're looking for something either a little bit more detailed or specific.
If you could say, by June 30th, this is where we're projecting our surplus would be.
That's already, that's...
We already get that.
Yeah, I mean, we could extrapolate with the trend, although that's, that is a moving target.
So you're saying no?
No.
No, we can give you one, but you're saying it's moving, it changes from day to day and from month to month.
Even like utility costs are going up and down and...
Well, it's a projection, it's not nothing accurate, but a projection amount.
I guess, I guess, go ahead.
I was just, I was just trying to figure out exactly, maybe what format...
Well, the reason why I'm asking is because if we do have projected funds that we see may be available, if we could possibly meet some other needs I listed here, suggestions, if that is possible. And one that I really had a heart for, that I wanted to bring before the board, was that if we could have a back-to-school prep workshop for parents of our students, and that basically would include volunteer train, school volunteer training for our parents that may want to volunteer during the next school year, also a basic computer skills workshop, so they could possibly help the students at home with SOL standards. Also, if we can provide maybe sample benchmark practice tests for the parents, so they can actually work with the kids before school start, whatever may be provided at the first quarter of the school year, and maybe a resume building workshop for our parents that are interested also as a part of the two-day prep workshop. But that was just an idea I thought that maybe we could possibly put together, and it wouldn't cost us a lot, but it would be a great help to our parents and to our students. And I'm not sure what we did with the old computers that we replaced, but I'm not sure if maybe if we still had some that were in working order, if they maybe could be provided to the parents that attend the workshop, that may not have a computer in the home, that possibly help with the students also. But just an idea I have for that. And that's all, sir. And that's all, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Hines?
A couple of things I wanted to ask about were, have already been discussed, so I won't, I won't repeat. I did have a, I'm looking for information about our teaching procedures. What's our, what's our schedule for adoption this year? What's up for schedule next year? But I've also had some comments about textbooks being sent home and never taken back to school. That this particular parent had three or four books from previous years that the school had never collected, that kind of issue. So, so what's the procedure for textbooks? You know, what is our average loss? Do we collect for lost books? What's that procedure? But also, too, what's our adoption schedule? Where are we with, you know, just textbooks in general? Just because it is the end of the year, and usually that's when adoptions start looking, looking for, because you do want to spend that, you know, that little bit of money. But also, too, I wanted to ask Mr. Steele about position savings for the end of the year, because I know we do have some positions that aren't filled, so I was just wondering where our position savings were, maybe a projected what they're gonna be at the end of the year, to see if what we can do with that, so that we don't have to give that back for position savings. And I wanted to ask a couple of questions about Connect 5, and maybe make some suggestions, and somebody can answer me later. But Connect 5 right now is what we use to talk with parents, you know, and that just goes to a, that goes to a number. But is there any way that we could do text messages as well? Sometimes those are more easily read, it's easily available, so that if you are gonna have a dismissal early, like we did for snow, you're not at work and the phone call goes home, and you miss the notification about. I just think text messages is a little bit more parent-friendly, in a day where many people can at least get a text message, and maybe an email that goes out with Connect 5, not just a phone call, but having a way that we can reach our, reach our parents in a now kind of world. So those are just my talking points tonight.
Do appropriate people have that?
I can start, I'm not going to say I'm going to start it, I can comment.
Okay.
On the adoption schedule, not being able to answer every question that you ask, but we are in the process right now of adopting. This is the year for the music and art textbooks. Actually, it's encore year.
Okay.
The actual dollar, I don't have that amount with me. As far as the adoption process is concerned, we do set it up to go out for three years. And, for example, three years ago, we adopted the reading, the year before, we did the mathematics.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, and this year coming up will be social studies, our year, with some of the standards getting ready to change. The money is there, we are planning, not planning, but we are in the process of using it, we have met with purchasing, and that is on the market. The procedure, as you well know, it does have to go through the procurement procedures, and we go, we actually ask our supervisors to write up a proposal, it's sort of like a request for proposal, indicating what they actually want to see in the books. But our supervisors were sort of a step ahead, and they have recommendations, and in looking at the recommendations, they still offer these recommendations in such a way that they will have to come in, give some type of report, and then we will have an opportunity to give feedback, and then the selection process goes on for the adoption of textbooks. But everybody is involved, the teachers, as well as the parents, and board members also have an opportunity to see these books, and we usually put them in our library for the community to see. But I will tell you that right now, a lot of these things are online. The publishing companies are not sending the books as they did yesteryear. You have to go online to see what's there. But we are in the process, Mrs. Hines, right at this point, we will be adopting music and art books, and we are working very closely with the purchasing office.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I, like Reverend Patillo, I too have a concern about our long-term suspensions and expulsions. And what the research is demonstrating now, in terms of the evidence, is that we're doing students a great deal of harm when we expel some of them from school or long-term suspend, even though we may be providing them with work at home. Working at home is not the same as being in a structured school environment. So I too would like to see some type of plan put in place to deal with students who may have issues that will, that put them at risk for expulsion or long-term suspension. Because really, for the expelled ones, we're really turning them over to the streets. And either you're going to deal with them now in a preventative way, or you're gonna be dealing with them later, when they get in trouble on the streets. So that's one of my concerns. The other issue was the breaks for the custodians, and I don't know if we have settled that particular issue yet. I think it was the meeting before last, we discussed two 15-minute breaks. So I wanted to know if we had resolved that issue. It was supposed to be something in writing, sent to the supervisors.
Yes. And we do, we did get that information. Jessica, will you?
If I remember correctly, when we last left, I was just surveying the four divisions to find out what they did, and then we were going to draft possibly a policy for you guys, the policy committee was gonna work on a policy for that. Surveyed the surrounding divisions, no one said that they offered breaks to any employees.
Okay, but, but we can say as a board that we're gonna do that.
Certainly, you may.
Right. That's not based upon what the other school districts are doing.
But I did follow up with what I was tasked to do.
Okay. So are we going to draft a policy?
That's what we're instructed to do.
Well, I think.
We didn't, we didn't.
No, I think you want to wait till regular meetings.
Okay.
This is something that's going to come up.
26.
To have both, to have, find out if the board as a whole will go for it or not.
All right.
And the only thing I do remember Keith bringing up the point of, we have to look at, because he said, what do you do with the bus drivers that are on the run? And, you know, I had not even thought that. And you have to be consistently fair across the board, I guess. So I think we do need a little bit more information from, to see, we don't want to set ourselves up for.
Okay.
So they stopped in the middle of the run.
I think custodial work is different from, you know, bus runs are a different type of work, right?
Yeah, that's what I said, but we run into a problem, since they all are considered hourly, you know, employees.
Mr. Parent?
I can answer.
Board member reports.
Right. I'm just gonna answer Mr. Patillo's question. If you, if you look at your financial report, it's called the Summary of General Fund Expenditures and Incumbrances by Major Object Code, and then has expenditure by object. If you look at the budget, and then you look at the current balance, the percentage spent and the projection, you can pretty well figure out what that, as he says, that moving target is going to be, just a bit.
Yeah, I could, I could do it percentage-wise, but I would like him to give me a number, if you could.
Okay. The other thing is that I brought up the last board meeting about PD 360 and the amount of money that we have been investing, and in talking with several principals, their feedback to me has been, because you had said that it's up to the principals to monitor. I know that Karen Streeter can print out a report by school, and we can see, because it's, it's a good professional development if it's being used. Now, what I'm hearing from principals is that some of the videos are very highly aligned to the Common Core, and that is the reason why some of the teachers, some of the principals are not directing teachers to use some of the videos, because it's very aligned with Common Core. I just want us to make sure that the, that we could, if we're not using PD 360. There are other ways that we can use Professional Development Fund, and if principals are saying, my teachers aren't using it, then we're wasting, we're wasting public funds that, that are not being used. I mean, it was a great concept, I, you know, I've been on it a couple of times, but if it's left to the building principal, and what I've, you know, I've talked to some of the principals about PD 360, and they're just saying that it's very, it has become aligned with Common Core, and Virginia is not Common Core. So I just want to bring that to your attention, to.
And thank you for that, Mr. Parent. As a matter of fact, when you brought that up before, I immediately, the next day, well, shortly after I met with Karen Streeter.
Right.
And in meeting with her, we discussed some of your same concerns, and she did say that it does need to be more tightly monitored. So I asked her, you know, who's actually supposed to be responsible for that, because I stated in the meeting that the principals are responsible, because we did not keep a record.
Right.
Of who was actually using it, other than hearing it when they would come in and give their school improvement report. So, to make a long story short, Karen and I have met twice. We have a meeting scheduled on April 27 at 1:00. We have the vendor coming in before we actually sign any more contracts to continue with PD 360. We want to see how much it is being used, and if indeed, it's going to be something that we want to spend those kinds of dollars for, for the upcoming year, because we are up for renewal. So we're right on it, and other directors have been invited to come in, and we will, and also principals, too, I believe, we said we would invite, one at the elementary, one at secondary, and get input to see if we want to invest in that further. So thank you for bringing that up again.
And the other thing is that I'm sure that some of board members have received comments about the cafeteria and the way the food's presented. And it's a board report, you know, I've, you know, I've gotten, excuse me, I've gotten texts, and with, and it's been on Facebook, a lot of negative comments, but I appreciate you posting the positive picture, because there are a lot of positive ways that we can display, display our food. That's just one incident, so I just think that we need, once again, we need in service of our cafeteria managers and workers of how you display food, because unfortunately, that's what the public now has seen, and is on television. I watched a program today, and, I mean, it was all over TV, talk show.
We need more money.
But anyway.
And I did send.
You did.
The lunch to Wavy.
Yes.
And asked them to please post this picture.
Right.
Of the beautiful lunch that was served at Churchland Preschool.
Mm-hmm.
And it was today, because they text me back and said, what school was it today?
Right.
So we're gonna see it back.
That's.
Because they love the negative stuff, so, but that really went viral quickly, and it was horrible looking, so.
It was on BOSUP today.
Huh?
It made BOSUP today.
You're kidding? BOSUP.
Yeah.
That's the national gossip.
Yes.
It's all over the country.
It was up there today.
What it was on?
I'm just finding that out.
Okay, Ms. Hines?
I was just, to, to, to piggyback with the lunches, my concern is the fact that a lot of our students eat only, you know, eat our lunches, and hunger with students is, is not acceptable, because when they're hungry, they don't learn. When they're hungry, they act out. That's one of those hierarchy of needs that we have to meet first. And so the food, while it's nutritious, because we do have to follow those stringent guidelines, and we know that the cost of food and preparing that food has increased because of these guidelines, we do need to make every effort that our students find lunch and breakfast, appetizing, so that they do eat it, because it's not fair for a student to go hungry just because the food didn't look good. You know, that, that, that carries over into academics, so that's, that's, that's a large concern.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
I did want to give some acknowledgement and gratitude to our administration, Dr. Bracy and Mr. Steele, as well as Dr. Shepherd and Mr. Lilly. One of our bus drivers, who's an extended church family member of mine, her funeral was on Monday, 37-years-old, Ms. Latoria Smith, who drove Bus 111, and the family, Mr. Trotter and the son Jay, who was a senior at Wilson High School, as well as grandmother, Ms. Apple, and all of the family were very appreciative of Portsmouth Public Schools' response to the death of their mother, daughter, and granddaughter. So thank you.
Okay. We're gonna go into closed meeting now, and there's no, unless the public just wants to stay, because once we come out of closed meeting, all we're gonna do is adjourn.